It being six o'clock on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, I'm calling this Board of Selectmen meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all
This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify us at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by contacting the selectmen's office. Between now and May 28th, residents can order native plants at bluestemnatives.com and orders can be picked up at the Highway Barn on Saturday, June 1st. For more information, please visit the town's website at KingstonMA.gov. The next Kingston Farmers Market is scheduled for Sunday, June 2nd, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Gray's Beach. As a reminder, the farmers markets run on the first Sunday of each month, May through October. Also at Gray's Beach, music nights will start for the season on June 11th and will take place on multiple dates throughout the summer. Watch the website for updates on upcoming music and movie nights. Speaking of June, starting on Monday, June 3rd, transfer station stickers will be on sale at the Highway Department window, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., with weekend sticker sales starting on June 22nd through July 14th, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., excluding holidays. For anyone interested in volunteering, we have a number of vacancies on various committees and boards. One of those openings is for an associate member on the zoning board of appeals. As a reminder, the ZBA issues special permits, grants variances, and hears appeals from decisions from the zoning enforcement officer. They are an integral part of determining the look and feel of our community and play a very important role in our town. If you or someone you know might be interested in filling this opening, please reach out to the selectmen's office. If you are interested in other opportunities, the whole list is also on that website. And thank you to everyone who voted in the town's annual election. We very much appreciate everyone who took the time to cast their votes, came out in the very damp weather. And I'm going to take an opportunity to thank Sheila Vaughn, who is joining us through Zoom, for her service to the town after spending nine years, I think it's nine, maybe 10, on school committee as well as four as a selectman. She was a pleasure to serve with and it was an honor to serve with her on the board. So, thank you, Sheila, and also welcome Melissa Bateman, Ms. Bateman, to the board. So, I think that's all I have for announcements. Does anyone have any other announcements that I missed or didn't have? No? Okay. All right. Is there anyone here for open forum?
How you doing? Tom Taylor, harbor master, a little update on the boat ramp and parking lot. We got 90% of it done. Boat ramp and the parking lot's going to be open on Saturday morning if everything goes right. We got a couple of loose ends to tighten up, but we should be all set. And I want to thank everybody for coming out over the weekend. Keith Hickey and Tyler showed up and helped us out a lot in the rain and lousy weather, but appreciate all the help and we got it done. So, looks good for Saturday. The weather's going to be good, so hopefully everything goes right. All right?
Speaking of the weekend, I was remiss in mentioning, I didn't mention the parade. So, the Memorial Day Parade is this coming Monday. Keith, can you help me fill in the details? What time do we start?
The parade starts at 10:00 o'clock from just across the street from Cancun, work its way down 3A to Main Street, and then ultimately to Evergreen to the Town Office Building and Townhouse and even after the Townhouse. Oh, excuse me. There'll be, I think, a pretty unique celebration in front of the Townhouse to recognize the veterans and also to recognize the significant improvement in the plaque that we have out front now that's, if people haven't had a chance to see it, it's pretty amazing. And once everybody finishes with the celebrations, recognizing our veterans, they're more than welcome to attend the cookout behind the Townhouse. Hamburgers and hot dogs, soft drinks, things of that nature, free of charge. So, please, as you mentioned, it can be a beautiful day, so if you have an opportunity to stop by, I'd love to see you. Have a free hamburger or a hot dog and enjoy the weather. So, yeah, should be a fun day.
And in terms of the plaque, Keith was mentioning the Veterans Memorial, which the big granite slabs were delivered and put in place yesterday. So, if you haven't had a chance to check it out, definitely recommend checking it out. But you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I just want to add something to what Tom Taylor mentioned in open forum a minute ago about volunteer day. Just, it was a tough day. It was a cold day. Keith got to see the operations unfold. Thank you, Keith, for being out there. And we put them across the river on a very tough job, which means you're basically whacking pins into, put together the docks in the pouring rain with about 20 mile an hour winds. And it was a good experience for, I know some people in the room will say maybe it wasn't the best experience.
They're laughing.
It got done, but I wanted to highlight, number one, just every year, there's an incredible, when we put the docks in and we take the docks out, there's an incredible amount of people that come out and have their, like, almost like their jobs assigned to do their special tasks because they know where these bolts go, they know where this docks go. And it saves the town an incredible amount of money having volunteers do it and to take it Saturday or two Saturdays or different times to be able to do that. But also, just going off of what Tommy said about the ramp and the parking lot, it's probably a good time just to thank Tommy for all the time that he gave as we open up, before our next meeting, this is the last meeting, we actually open up the new ramp, the new parking lot, the Adena, for a lot of the time that Tom Taylor, the harbor master, put into volunteering. Because when I say volunteer, he doesn't get paid during the time that this is happening. So, from the fall to now, he hasn't, he was off the books. And he was down there every day, working with Ducks Recovery Construction, Bo, who's absolutely incredible on this project, from engineering to design to implementing the project, to Tom Bombardier, who wrote the grant with the Secret Economic Council to get us the funds to be able to make this project really work. But there's like tons of other people that we could name that have been a part of it. But I just want to especially just call it Tommy. I know he hates when if anybody calls him out, but just the amount of time he put into it is absolutely ridiculous. It was more than a 40-hour work week and he did it for free to get this thing done. And, yeah, he did a great job and thanks for the update, but I also think we, I think the town needs to have that little update as well. But did an awesome job, Tommy. Thank you.
Speech. No kidding. Okay. Any other announcements? Because I feel like we tacked on a couple more. All right. Now, we're actually going to do open forum again. So, anybody else here for open forum? Anyone online? No? Okay. All right. So, I have a question for you all. The first appointment after an election is always a reorganization of the board. Now, that is a little bit of an awkward thing to put first, so I'm happy to do it now. We can do it now. Or if you want, we can do it at the end of the meeting. I have no preference, but if people feel like they're ready and anybody could chair it, then great. So, any preference?
Fine with them.
You'd prefer end or?
I don't care. Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter? All right. We'll just do it, though. Rip off the Band-Aid, as they say. Don't kick the can. All right. So, it's been an honor to serve as everyone's chair here for the last three years. I would like to nominate someone else to be the chair for this year. I don't know if there's anyone who wants to do it. I know Eric has some experience on school committee as chair.
I didn't say he's.
So, I personally would nominate Eric if he were willing to fill the role. I don't know if anyone else wants to make a nomination or wants to raise their hand to volunteer.
I fully support Eric doing that. That'd be amazing.
Are you willing to do it?
I am.
Okay. All right. So, I'm going to make the motion to appoint Eric Crone for the position of chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're not going to move yet. Let's do the rest of it first. Okay. So, now I need a nomination for vice chair. Is there anyone who would like to do it? Anyone who is interested in doing it?
I'll make a motion.
Tyler.
There you go.
Would you be willing to be vice chair?
Yes.
Hesitation. Okay.
Yes. Yes, I would.
Okay. All right. Everybody with that?
It makes the most sense because we would stay in the same order, sort of.
Well, you have to come over here and I have to do.
But he'll still be to my right and I'll be to his left.
It's going to be, it's going to be an interesting little musical chairs for a moment here. Okay. So, did you want to make that motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Tyler Bishar for the position of vice chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you not vote?
Aye.
I mean, we can also just leave it at the end of the meeting, though.
Clerk, what do you want to do?
I'm happy to take it if you guys want me to. I keep the notes in the executives anyway unless you want it. Okay.
So moved.
No, I didn't make a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Eric making a motion.
To name Kimberly Umberg as the clerk, the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Are you seconding that?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we all have to rearrange. So. We do.
Why?
Because this is where the chair sits. Yes, you do. It'll be a little easier.
I'm already plugged in. We're good.
What? You want to say?
I don't care.
All right.
I'm just running videos, so I don't want to unplug and...
Eric, you want to switch the name? You want me to move?
No, it's okay. It's fine.
Throwing me off.
Next meeting, next meeting.
Fine. The nameplates are all there.
So, am I following this rather than the?
Nope. It's just my notes in case you want them.
Okay.
You'll get that every two weeks.
You will not get that.
No, that's good.
Come on, Chair.
All right. So, we have a six, let me make sure it's on. We have a 6:00 p.m. public hearing for the renewal of shellfish aquaculture license renewals. John Webble and Thomas Taylor. Shellfish aquaculture licenses are renewed every 10 years. The shellfish aquaculture licenses of John Webble and Thomas Taylor expired June 23rd, 2024. Both individuals are active shell fishermen and would like their licenses renewed. Similar to boat mooring, shellfish licenses are retained by the current license holder until they relinquish the license. So, we have a public hearing notice. Pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 130, Section 60, the Kingston Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the Townhouse, Room 200, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass., to consider the applications for the renewal of two licenses for the operation of shellfish aquaculture. Two 3-acre sites for shellfish development areas situated in the intertidal zone. Thomas Taylor, 20 Cole Street, Kingston, Ichabod's Flat Map 1, Plot B, 3 acres, and John Webble, 21 Jones River Drive, Kingston, Ichabod's Flat Map 1, Plot C, 3 acres. The applications and plan of the area are on file and available for public inspection at the selectmen's office during regular business hours.
I move the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That was unanimous. So, would anybody like to speak at the public hearing?
Sorry, just one second. If we could take the recreation stuff out of order, Keith asked for that.
Good evening. Joe Slogai, you're a shellfish constable. I just want to put my two cents in. Since I've been in this position and even before, I am aware of no violations to their license. They're also in full compliance to the Department of Marine Fisheries' Vibrio parahemolyticus program, which is tough because essentially, they have one hour from when the shellfish are exposed to the air to get them in ice and kept that way until they reach their drop-off point. It's not a small job. So, that's my point.
All right. Any other public comments, either here in the room or online? And any comments from Mr. Taylor or Mr. Webble? No? Okay. Any additional comments or questions from Keith?
Yes, sir.
And this is where I like your notes. And any questions or comments from the board members?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
I move the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That passed unanimous. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the shellfish aquaculture license renewal applications for Thomas Taylor and John Webble as designated in said applications for an additional 10-year term expiring June 23rd, 2034.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passed unanimous. All right. Next, we're going to take an item out of order. Number six, the request to increase FY24 Recreation Revolving Fund limit. Annually, town meeting approves an annual spending limit of revolving funds. For FY24, the limit was set at $500,000 for the Recreation Revolving Fund. Due to increased recreation programs, the limit set for FY24 may be exceeded. To address the current year limit, the Board and Finance Committee can vote to increase the limit for the current year. The Recreation Director recommends increasing the limit to $575,000. If approved, the town administrator and Recreation Director will present the request to the Finance Committee at an upcoming Finance Committee meeting. As a reminder, the FY25 limit was increased to $700,000. We just did that at town meeting.
Can I just ask one question about this?
Please.
So, what happens if we say yes and Finance Committee says no?
Stays at the current $500,000.
Okay. And what does that mean?
What that would mean was that any recreation programs that need to be canceled to not allow the revolving fund to exceed $500,000 will have to be canceled for the remainder of the year.
Okay.
And again, this is not, the funds are not coming out of our budget. It's coming out of their revolving fund.
Correct. And the revolving fund, again, it's revenues that are collected through league fees, different programs, and the fees that are charged for those programs. So, this increase does not affect anybody's property taxes solely revenue driven by user fees and spent for on programs, field maintenance, things of that nature.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? No? Someone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the Recreation Revolving Fund expenditure for FY24 to $575,000 contingent on Finance Committee approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passed unanimous. Thank you.
And then it's number five on additional items. Those are the two rec things together.
Got it. All right. So, we will also take number five out of additional items. The seasonal employee appointments for Recreation Department. The Recreation Department is recommending the appointment of the following summer park staff and counselors. Would someone like to make a motion?
Could, I just, we don't have to read all these names, do we?
You can make a motion to, if you're willing to do so, approve as presented by the Recreation Director in the addendum.
In the addendum, okay. Okay. I move the Board of Selectmen appoint the seasonal recreation staff as presented by, as requested by the Director of Parks Recreation as presented in the addendum.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passed unanimous. All right. Anything else for Rec Department? Is that it? That's all.
Deal with the end.
We have some liquor licenses, but I think we can wait on those.
Sounds good. All right. So, back to item number three, presentation on recycling plant to be presented to the planning board.
They can present it if you want.
Yeah. So, there is a developer who's expressed interest in constructing a recycling plant, and he is here with us this evening to present his plan and update the board and the public on the project's anticipated timeframe. Additional information was included in our meeting packet. For those not aware of the proposed project, the developer's plan is to construct this project on the property currently owned by the O'Donnell Family Trust off Marion Drive. This project will go before the planning board for review as this does not fall under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, but it's worth noting that this project, if approved, would provide Kingston with a significant commercial taxpayer and would provide a reduction in the town's solid waste costs. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kevin O'Reilly. I'm the Community Affairs Rep for Kingston Environmental Partners. I'm joined tonight by my colleagues, Jack Walsh, who's the managing partner of KEP, and Therese Murray, who is also working with me on Community Affairs. And first off, I want to thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present tonight the idea that we have for our waste facility, transfer facility off of Marion Drive near the train station. Tonight will be the first of many public meetings. This is the first time we're in public to introduce the project and to formally introduce the project to the town. We understand as we move forward, there'll be many questions from your board and others as well as the public. We have a short video tonight that Jack will introduce to give a quick overview, and then we'd like to spend the bulk of the evening per your time to answer any questions that you may have. I will say there will be an extensive permitting process in addition to Planning Board and Board of Health here as long, as well as the state DEP. And as many of you know in town government, those also afford a lot of public input as well. So, we're right at the beginning. We look forward to working with you collaboratively and answering questions and watching the project evolve. And again, thank you for the time, and I'd like to bring up our managing partner, Jack
Thank you. Congratulations, new board member, Ms. Chair and Mr. Chair. I guess I was prepared to acknowledge both tonight. And my name is Jack Walsh. I've met with some of you members of the town going back probably a year and a half ago. Started looking at this project. I have been involved in environmental services business from an operator to a developer for the last 35 years and actually excited to coming back here tonight. I actually spent nine years of my life here. I grew up and started a family over on the West Street, Longwood Circle, the area. I understand one of the board members lives in the neighborhood and happy to come back here and present this project, which I think is an exciting project for the town, for our company. And as Kevin indicated, this is the start of a process that will take either one or two years. It's very involved with the public, and although it's a private property, we're here to outreach, to start a process with the town and the board members and, like Kevin indicated, Planning Board, Board of Health, and some other boards in town. So, our kind of philosophy is to come out, we've done some due diligence, we certainly have a lot more to do, we certainly need to talk to more people, but we're excited. It's a good project, could become a very significant taxpayer from a commercial perspective in town. We have a good neighbor philosophy. We feel that the location of this property is right off the highway with very minimal impact to the neighborhoods. And that's just a couple of minutes of introduction. We have like a four-minute video we'd like to play. It just gives kind of an understanding of what we're looking to do, what we're looking to cite at the facility, and certainly after that, I'd be open for any questions the board may have. Tonight's the start of a process that we envision having update meetings before the board and the other various boards in town. So, with that, I think we can start.
At Kingston Environmental Partners LLC.
Well, yeah.
We don't have to go to the house, we're...
It only works for the people at home.
...and to bring a new source of revenue to Kingston, helping pay for the schools, our police and fire departments, our public library, and all of our town's essential services. We know that this can be accomplished in a way that is beneficial to the community with minimal impact. Let's take a closer look at what the proposed project entails. On the 20-acre site right off of Route 3 at Exit 17, we are proposing to build this new facility to take in waste from the surrounding communities, load it into specially fitted rail cars, and transport it out of state to the final destination for disposal of the waste. Our proposal envisions construction of a new facility that would tie into the regional railway system. Rail transfer stations like the one proposed by KEP are an important component of the state's solid waste infrastructure, utilizing the state's existing railways, reducing the number of large diesel trucks on the road. And the KEP facility will become one of the largest taxpayers in Kingston and will provide additional revenue from tipping fees through a host community agreement. Trucks arriving on the site enter the facility and are checked in at the scale house and move into the transfer station where the waste is unloaded from the truck. Operations of the facility are managed inside the waste building. The waste is unloaded onto the rail cars. Rail cars are then stationed on site until they are collected by a regularly scheduled engine. Similar transfer stations exist in several communities in our area already, but these do not have access to the railway system, leading to increased costs and significantly higher levels of environmental impact. This is what makes our proposal a real opportunity for Kingston. Traditional transfer stations rely on a constant stream of trucks clogging the roads. Landfills can bring any number of challenges and impacts to a host community and ultimately have a finite time until capacity is met, at which point the host community stops receiving any benefit from the operation. This proposed waste-to-rail transfer station will have minimal community impact, with trucks driving along clearly restricted routes to and from the transfer station, along roadways little used by the residents of Kingston. And the long-term generation of revenue for Kingston will guarantee a level of stability and predictability for the town's budget, reducing the reliance on our homeowners to solely cover all the expenses for our town's services. The project will also be subject to a lengthy environmental review by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which encourages public input. At Kingston Environmental Partners, we believe this is a win-win situation for the community. We hope you will join us in supporting this proposal, and we look forward to answering any questions you have.
So, that's just a brief, kind of brief video. So, like I indicated before, we started the process as far as looking at this site probably a year and a half ago and formed a company for the purposes of signing a lease for the property, and that company is called Kingston Environmental Partnership. As we move forward after tonight, identity will be formed to basically submit the permits and ultimately be the operator of the facility. So, I know there was some confusion of the present owner of the property is our landlord right now. We have a lease agreement, and that's the only capacity that that operation has right now. We are fully responsible and in control of our permitting and the operation of the eventual facility. So, with that, I know I've met with a few of the folks. If there's questions, we are here tonight, again, it's not part of a required process, but we felt, you know, it's an important project for the town and the residents. We wanted to start off by saying that, you know, we're going to be here updating the various boards. Permitting is probably going to take between a year and two years. The first step is to work with the town administrator on a community agreement to kind of certify some of these benefits. Certainly, the Board of Selectmen will be involved in that process. We believe that's probably going to take 30 or 60 days or more, and then we're going to start probably sometime in the summer with the official, the MEPA process, where we'll get traffic, and the DEP process will look at, you know, all the issues that come up with these types of facilities. But it's going to be a new building on the property built for this use, and we're excited some of the technology that we've looked at for this type of operation. So, that's kind of a, kind of a brief review of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Before we open it up to questions from the board, Keith, did you have something, anything you wanted to add to this?
If I could, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I've had the opportunity to meet with Jack now with other members of staff for a year and a half? Is that how long it's been? Off and on. And certainly, Jack is aware and his team is aware, and we've certainly shared with him that there's a lot of concerns, I think, that people... him that there's a lot of concerns, I think, that people will raise about, what does this really mean to the town of Kingston, and what is the impact environmentally, traffic-wise, things of that nature. And I know that Jack doesn't want to get into a lot of details, but I think it's important, maybe, for people to realize, trucks will arrive at the center, they will be weighed, and they will direct, then they will go directly into a enclosed building through a door, through large doors, obviously, right? They'll empty their load on that cement floor, and then exit the building. While in the building, that trash, it sounds like, will be sorted. Some of it will be recycled, if it can be. And the trash will be loaded onto railcars, inside the building, covered, when they're full. And a train, it sounds like, will come potentially daily, Monday through Friday, at an off-peak hour, in conjunction with the commuter rail service, to deliver a couple of trailers, or railcars, and then remove the two full railcars, that primarily will remain inside the building, until they're removed by the train. You know, from what I've learned about this process, obviously, you know, we're having some real challenges at disposing of our trash, in a cost-effective manner. Our agreement with CMAS, where we dispose of our trash now, ends in 2029. We've been told there'll be a significant increase in our tonnage costs. Jack has mentioned during his brief presentation, that there'll be some sort of a host-community agreement, that I think can be designed to meet the needs of the town of Kingston specifically. Whether it be reduced trash, per-ton trash costs, whether it be a fee to use the roads, a per-ton fee to use the roads, that could, that would be generated for town of Kingston revenue. Obviously, increasing the commercial tax base in Kingston is something that I think is critical, trying to keep Kingston affordable. Jack has shared with us, when we talked about some of the concerns about traffic on some of the roads, and what that means, that the haulers will be instructed to use Route Three as often as they possibly can, as long as that route is a reasonable route to take. So you're only going to have truck traffic on town roads for a couple of miles, and then, again, the trash gets hauled off by train. So, this, there's some, obviously, he's going to, this project has to make it, jump through all the hoops, and make it through all the permitting process. But if it does, you know, the process, the project, excuse me, could be, you know, fairly significant to Kingston, provide a significant, as I mentioned, commercial real estate base, and also provide a new revenue source, that could be used to offset operating costs, or, you know, even potentially use earmark it, like we do with the mealstax, with capital planning, and potentially earmark some or all of that, depending on the revenues, for road repairs. So, I've dealt with a lot of developers, I think Jack seems like a pretty straight shooter. I've gotten to know him a little bit, and I think he understands the challenges he faces here, the concerns that people will have. I have those as well. But the questions that I've been able to ask of him, you know, he's provided that information back to either myself or town staff, in a responsive manner, with, without trying to sugarcoat anything. So, I'm excited to watch this application process, go through the state and local approval process, and determine, find out whether or not it comes out the other side.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
In the presentation, the video mentioned roadways, that they're little used by residents, it said. And I guess I would just be careful how we go about that, because there are at least twenty businesses or so on that roadway, plus there's at least one residence, plus that's how we get to the transfer station, assuming we still have a transfer station if this all happens. I don't really know how that interacts, but I just think we need to also be thinking about those folks, roadway maintenance, those types of things.
Yes, that's a great point, yep.
Dust mitigation, because there's, right now, there's a lot of dust happening over there now, and I understand you're not the owner, merely leasing, but these are the concerns, I think, that are going to come up. Traffic, obviously, always, traffic, noise.
Yep. We're going to encourage site visits and site meetings. Yeah, the video was more just to give people a general feeling.
Understood.
But the property itself is pretty, it's almost, it's a half a mile from Smith Lane. And I know there's a Smith Lane neighborhood on one side of Route Three, and those trucks are not going to be going through that neighborhood. And we pretty much can enforce that, because if people break rules, then they don't allow to access the facility. So very, very, I realize that situation, and, you know, there are business owners on Marion Drive, and as you come off the highway, I've met with some of them, and certainly we're going to be meeting a lot more people, but I completely understand that issue, and the issue as far as what's going on at the property now, is not the operation that we're proposing here. Our project is completely indoors. There will no be outside wind or issues that happen there now.
And then, one other.
Can I just, can I just add to that one? I apologize.
Sure.
So, again, you mentioned dust, which is a concern, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the access point will have to be constructed to this proposed recycling plant, that will be on, that will be, I don't know how I'll say it, other than the, on the other side of the mountain, on that property. And it will not be using the existing dirt road. That, the new road that's going to be constructed will be paved?
Correct. The new road that will be developed will be a paved, well-maintained road, and it's parallel to the existing rail line.
Sorry, the only other thing I wanted to add was, it's also the only access to the MBTA. So anyone who's using the MBTA has to travel that same road, so just something to be thinking about as you guys are working through these plans.
Those are all good questions, and we'll have a significant traffic study, that's going to incorporate all the existing condition issues, as we progress through the permitting.
As far as the traffic study goes, and, I mean, you're just being barely comprehensive, so showing what it's going to look like, because coming off of Route Three is one thing, coming off of Main Street, you know, Three A, things of that nature, One Oh Six, those would be, those would be a lot of the pinch points that people in town are going to be, are going to be looking for data on, and projections on. So is that going to be a big part of the study?
Most definitely. I mean, as I said, I lived here for a number of years, and I understand the traffic on One Oh Six and Three A. That's not going to be a designated truck road. Now trucks happen to be operating now on that road, and they're servicing different neighborhoods in Kingston. I imagine they were going to continue to do that, the majority of trucks will not be accessing the site through, down through Three A. And we can make that part of the planning board process, as far as truck road. And people like to cut corners, as we all know, but we can enforce that, because they're going to want to come to this type of facility, and if they break the rules, clearly they're not going to be allowed to access the facility. But we'll have, we'll have the town Planning Board involved with our traffic study, and, you know, existing conditions, what's going on there Monday through Friday, and what the impact of the traffic that we're looking to put on that roadway, as well.
What would, what would be the potential, I guess, time that you guys are thinking about using, operating the train, and then also the length of the train?
Yeah, so right now, that line is so-called underutilized commercial freight line. In December of last year, an entity called Mass Coastal purchased the service rights, used to be called the old Colonia Bay State Line. And their vision back ten years ago was to populate that line with commercial freight. So what happens in a lot of these commuter rail lines in the state, is off-peak. And off-peak is they allow freight service. The freight service on this line, because it's at the very end, is a very efficient area to have a facility like this, because trains will come down, and they'll have to come to the end of the spur, which will be right at the end of the spur. We've been told that there's a couple new customers that are going on that line. Our development will probably be like the anchor of a mall, it'll be the, an important part of that whole service line. As far as the length of the cars, it's probably very similar to what you see there with the commuter line. It's not like miles-long freight service, they have up to forty cars, they can, but because of this, it's not a very populated freight line. Right now, if they were starting tomorrow, they would just be servicing our cars, which, you know, could be five cars a day, or ten cars a day, if we're fully operational. But they work very well with the MBTA. And all along that branch, all the way up to Braintree, there's service layover tracks, where the, you know, the freight services manage off-site in the commuter rail run. So, it's a pretty efficient service.
Yeah, I think my comment on it is more for how long, how long it could be, and when it's crossing over Three A, because obviously freight is going to be going a lot slower than the commuter rail. And if, if that's something that shuts down Three A for ten minutes, all of a sudden, traffic's backed up all the way to Ducksbury.
Yeah.
And that's, I guess that's my concern.
I know what intersection you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's, again, it's as efficient as the commuter rail line when that closes, you just said the commuter rail line closes a lot more. There's a lot more activity on that line with the commuter rail.
Yep.
And managing it, like our facility, the train usually manages in a way where it's off-peak to that intersection, so they're not, the lanes close now because it's commuter, it's busy in the morning for rush hour, it's busy at the end of the day, but there are off-peak times, late morning and afternoon, that the service line is pretty efficient.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
New here, maybe you guys have already discussed it, but, I don't know, sorry, being new here, you may have already discussed it, but, the trash, like I'm envisioning a trash truck.
Correct.
Right? Are there any other regulatory trash that could be put into this facility?
So it's mostly municipal solid waste.
Okay.
And that's basically the waste that you pick up from someone's house or a business. There's no hazardous wastes, there's no liquid waste or sludges, or that type of material.
Okay.
It's regular municipal solid waste. And just to piggyback a little bit, you know, we, our philosophy is recycling, I know the town has done a very good job with their recycling program. I actually, when I lived here twenty years ago, I worked at Waste Management as a General Manager, and we started partnering with the South Shore Recycling Collaborative, which I understand they're still involved in the town here, but we have some ideas on improving the recycling efforts here. Naturally, we have to pay for the tonnage that goes out as trash, and we'd love to be able to convert as much as we can into, you know, something useful. And we have some ideas on partnering with the existing recycling group here in town to do that, and we're excited, though, I think we can, we can cheer in specifically like organics and compost issues that some towns struggle with.
When this is up and running at its peak, how many trucks a day do you think this would be?
Good question. So we're, peak optimal would probably be around six to eight trucks an hour, based on a twelve-hour operating day. We're looking to start around six in the morning, and end at six at night, and no Sundays, and half a day on Saturdays, and close most holidays.
And I know when we, when we were looking at the plans for this, where the trucks would line up, looked like it would not interfere with the MBTA, the folks driving down the road to that parking lot. That's still the case here.
Yeah, so the other attribute of this property is, from where you come off of Marion, you're going to be on a road, three to four hundred yards, on a privately paved road to the building. So there's not going to be any queuing of trucks on Marion Drive at all. And we'll condition the permit to say that.
Okay. And then, just one other question, I know we've talked about this in the past, but what are we thinking in terms of, and maybe Mr. Bazler wants to answer this, but in terms of the effect on our transfer station, would we be replacing, would we still be performing some tasks at our transfer station?
Yeah, not to speak for Paul, but we are not dictating what you do with your existing system. We have some ideas on improving it. The town will start struggling with those costs to dispose of waste. I think we, certainly, we have some ideas on including them in our community host presentation. That's something the town needs to decide on. I do think that this is going to be a system that's going to work a little more efficient for residents. It's more standard, you'll know where all your trash is going to go. We have some ideas as far as, you know, I don't want to get into details of specifically all this stuff, because I want to hear from the board members, on what's important to the town. But these systems usually do help, they can work with the existing infrastructure, or it can replace the existing infrastructure. It's pretty much up to the town.
Okay. And Keith, at what point will, do we have plans for them to come back before this board, for another presentation during this process?
Yeah, so, as Jack mentioned in his presentation, you know, one of the things that they'd like to do in the next thirty to sixty days, is to try to sit down with either staff and board members, or just staff, whatever the board's comfortable with, and come up with the terms of a host-community agreement, that would outline, you know, the expectations that the town would have of this organization, and present it back to the Board of Select for your consideration, and those would be the terms they'd have to operate under moving forward. And again, as Jack mentioned, it can be, you know, as, the big piece frankly, is, A, the cost of disposal, do we want, are they going to take our trash, are we going to continue with our own trash? Do we want to operate our transfer station, do we not? Those are things that I think that, among staff and the board, we've got to decide what the priorities are for us, and then bring it back for consideration for the board.
I'm assuming, I mean, that we're going to also go to other communities that have similar community host agreements. I mean, I don't know how many of these are throughout the Commonwealth, but even throughout New England or similar communities, to see what, what other communities have done.
Absolutely. So, you know, there's opportunities out there to, that we'll reach out to those communities, find out, at the end of the day, you know, if they had a chance to do it over again, what would they do differently? What did they, what were they satisfied with, what did they like? And then try to meld whatever agreement that we can come up with, that best meets the needs of Kingston, while hopefully avoiding some of the pitfalls that some of these other communities that are already signed up have found themselves in.
All right. Any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one more point of information. I'd like to share Kevin, our community rep's email address, so if people watching here tonight, or board members, they can contact, and kind of the goal is to try to, you know, help with this whole process. I know it's new, people have questions in town here, and we'd be very happy to try to accommodate any concerns they have.
So, anybody that has questions that they'd like to email, it's kingstonemplc@gmail.com.
We'll provide the town.
We can provide, provide that with information.
So Keith, do we have a mechanism to post that on our site somewhere?
So, we spoke about that this afternoon. Obviously, the video that they provided to us, as well as, you know, some basic information that we've been, that they're willing to provide to us, we'll get that on our website. When they're comfortable placing on the website, I think they want a little bit of time, they're not ready to have it posted tomorrow, but sometime, hopefully in, you know, the month of June, by the month of June, you know, we'll have some information. It is a significant project for Kingston, and I mentioned to them that I'd like to try to highlight some of the information that's going to be provided on our website, so people who want to take the time to read through it, have the opportunity to do that. So the web, we'll put the email up there, as well as whatever other information that we think is appropriate.
We'll have Kevin's contact information.
Thank you.
And I think it would probably make sense to negotiate that community host agreement, and perhaps have a couple members of the board involved in that as well.
Sure.
So maybe we can, I'm sure nothing's going to happen in the next two weeks, but maybe we can think this through, and if anybody's interested in being a part of that, can we just put this on the agenda for the next meeting, so we can discuss? I don't, I don't know if we need a vote to put somebody on that committee, or?
I think you want some consensus. I mean, I don't know, I don't know, you know, agenda item, but if there's a consensus on a couple of people, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good. Yeah, okay. Sounds good. All right, moving on to item number four.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Declaration of trust between the Town of Kingston and the Affordable Housing Trust. The Affordable Housing Trust has updated their declaration with the town and is requesting that our board adopt the new declaration. Town Council has reviewed the declaration and provided comments in our meeting materials for consideration. Any comments, questions from the board? Keith, did you have anything to add?
Actually, I did.
Oh, you do? I have nothing. Thank you.
Um, just one, one clerical question, I guess. So the signature line, I'm assuming would be, all the signature lines would be updated to the current board. And then do we, so we have to change the trust every time a trustee changes? How lovely. Isn't that great?
And before, it had to go to town meeting. So I have that changed last year at town meeting.
Yes, I remember that. That is better.
Instead of town meeting, yeah.
Um, and then I don't, I don't recall, but currently I believe Sheila Vaughn is the.
Yes, she is.
Board of Selectmen appointment. Can it be, can the appointment be a, a non-member of the board? Like, can we appoint someone on behalf of the board if, if she wanted to continue serving or does it need to be one of the five of us?
It says the Board of Selectmen shall designate a minimum of one of its members to serve on the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
In many communities, there's multiple selectmen as well as the town administrator as trustees.
Okay.
Sheila has informed me that she would like to stay on as a resident, but we certainly do need someone from the Board of Selectmen so that we can stay abreast of anything that might impact the Affordable Housing Trust.
Do we need to do that tonight? No, we can wait. Okay. We can wait.
He's asking if we, we have to do it tonight. Do we?
I, I think you, what was that?
Do we have to name a board member to the Affordable Housing Trust this evening?
I don't think you do. What that would mean is you, you know, a board member couldn't attend and vote at whenever the next Affordable Housing meeting is, if it's happening before the Fourth of June, when the next board meeting is. But we could put it on the, the, the June fourth agenda. The board can decide who they'd like to appoint and from that point forward, they're a voting member of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Jean, did you wanna address anything else?
Certainly. As the chairman of the Recycling Committee, I'm hoping that you will consider including us in the conversations regarding the aforementioned project. I had met with Teresa Murray previously and shared my thoughts with her on that. Those were personal thoughts, so certainly at this point I will take it back to the committee for them to come up with their own position on this project. But I certainly would appreciate us being included in the conversations as this is our, our meat and potatoes really is the recycling and trash. And I would urge you to keep in mind that we do have a private hauler regulation that requires private haulers to collect not only trash but recycling materials. So most of the private companies have gone to a dual truck. So half the truck is trash and half of it is recycling.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add about the Affordable Housing Trust?
I don't think so. Was there something you had in mind?
No, I don't think so. Okay.
Just if I, if I, I'm sorry. Correct me if I'm wrong, Trish. My understanding is that the, the clerk would like, when you're, when, when the board and the Affordable Housing Trust board members are in the building, if they can stop by the clerk's office and sign your name in front of him so he can authorize.
Yes.
Uh, the document, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, just let us know when it's available, 'cause I know you do have to update it.
All right, so if there's no other comments or questions, anyone wanna make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the revised Kingston Affordable Housing Trust declaration as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number five, renewal of razor clam licenses. Annually, our board awards eleven razor clam licenses. Also, similar to moorings, licenses have historically been awarded to the people who had one in the previous year unless they are no longer interested. The individuals listed within our meeting materials are the same list of folks who had licenses this past year and they requested renewals. Shellfish Constable Joe Slogar Jr. is recommending the board approve the list as presented. Before anyone makes a motion on that, though, we must also establish a fee for the license. In preparation for this meeting, the Shellfish Constable has reviewed the annual fee charged in neighboring communities to verify our fee is similar and recommends that the license fee remain at three hundred dollars per year. So any comments or questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the renewal of the razor clam licenses of the following individuals for the, of the, how can I say that?
Individuals as presented?
Individuals as presented for the term of July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and set the license fee at three hundred dollars. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, we already did number six. So moving on to number seven. We have a request for six one-day liquor licenses from Forty Second Parallel Brewing Company for Grays Beach Music Nights. We received a request from Stephen Darby at Forty Second Parallel Brewing Company for six one-day liquor licenses for the upcoming music nights at Grays Beach. We, we received all of the necessary approvals from our departments along with the completed paperwork. And the Director of Parks and Recreation has requested that we approve the request along with any rain dates that may be necessary. Any comments or questions?
If you make a motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the six one-day liquor license request from Stephen Darby of Forty Second Parallel Brewing Company for Grays Beach Music Nights at Grays Beach on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, July ninth, two thousand twenty-four, July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, from five thirty PM to eight PM, along with any rain dates that may be determined by the Recreation Commission.
Second.
Can I just ask one question?
Absolutely.
Can we just have an open-ended rain date? That's okay for liquor licenses? We don't have to name a specific date? Okay, great.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving along to additional items, number one, to discuss the Town Administrator Evaluation. So included in our materials for this evening's meeting was the draft annual evaluation for Mr. Hickey as summarized by Town Council. Now that we've all had a chance to review the document, does anyone have any questions or amendments that they would like to make?
I just had a question. Does anyone know what the red font meant? There was one line in each of them that was red. Did that mean something or was that just an accident? Nobody knows. Okay.
I was equally confused by that.
Okay, I mean, it looked like it was just five folks. I just.
I think what that, that red font, well, the way I took the red font was that was kind of a summary of each of the, um, responses to each of the, each of the classifications or criteria that the board.
It, it could have been. I just, there was no key, so I wasn't sure. Okay. Okay.
All right, so any, any questions or comments? Any comments or questions from Mr. Hickey?
No, thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate them. Um, I guess I, I would ask the board to either allow me to or work with me to identify some goals that the board can, I think the board can support and approve. For the upcoming fiscal year, I think that this upcoming fiscal year is going to be a challenging one financially, um, more so when we get to the budget than, than anything else. So I think that's gonna be something we need to look at. But, um, just to try to make sure that I am addressing the areas that the board expects to be addressed, I, I would love to be able to be collaboratively work with the Board of Selectmen to come up with some of those goals so we're all working in the same direction. Happy to post them on the website and provide updates on a regular basis.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt.
That's all right.
Do we wanna put that on one of the next two meetings to, to discuss before, I mean, just before we jump into FY twenty-five?
No, I agree. I, so I can, you know, if you'd like me to, I can put together some goals that I think would be something the board may wanna consider. You may like some of them, you may not. You may add to them, you may not. And then ideally sometime around the first of July, we'll have those wrapped up. We've got two meetings obviously in June. And, you know, we're all, we'll all be heading in the right direction, in the same direction. If that works.
I like that idea.
Can I just add? So as part of the review too, there's, there are some comments and things about some ideas for goals. So maybe you can start there and try to.
I'll use those as a basis and, and go from there.
So I think we should all take as, as homework to, to kinda go through our list of what's, what's important, what our goals are for the following year. Um, I think that'd be, that'd be huge. I, I know one of the most important things for the town is gonna be budgets and, and overrides for next year that we wanna avoid. So I'm sure finances and budgeting to the extent that we can control or whatnot. And, you know, part of that is these projects where we're increasing the commercial tax base. That's certainly a, a high priority.
It may be worthwhile. I know, I know the, Cam and I had talked about this, not in the near, in the recent past, but in the past. Um, you know, it might make some sense to try to get together with certainly the local school committee, maybe the regional as well. I think it was challenging this year and for a lot of different reasons to try to present a budget, a complete budget to the board, to the community and to the finance committee in a timely manner with the school, you know, coming in less than a month before town meeting. Um, so can we, you know, can we work collaboratively with the school committees? I think the board and the school community need to, need to be lockstep on how we deal with some of these issues next year. And maybe this is, we can, if we can improve communication and all be on the same page, that might help.
And even working with the other two towns in our regional.
Sure, yeah.
District, because we're, all three towns are gonna have a hard time. We're usually the least affected and, and we've got a big disaster ahead of us if, if, if we have to go to an override.
Yeah. So I, you know, I think that's an area that, um, again, I'm not trying to be critical. Uh, so I don't want anybody from the school side to feel that way. It's just, I think there's, I think we can be better than we have been. And, um, you know, if we can, if we can try to make sure that we're, you know, we've got some capital expenses moving forward in the future that we've gotta think about, whether it be a police station.
Right.
A superintendent's office, things of that nature. And, and if we can, you know, try to plan that out collaboratively, it'll just be a, a better end result for everybody.
All right. So getting back to the evaluation, does someone wanna make a motion to approve the evaluation?
Sure, I can do that. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the annual evaluation of the Town Administrator as presented this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Question?
Yes.
Should I abstain from this since I didn't have any part in this all the way around?
You, you can.
But I didn't partake in it.
You can. It's really up to you. Um, if you don't feel comfortable, if you, which you really didn't have enough time to go, to go through it, you certainly could.
I'll abstain.
Okay. So we have four yays and one abstain. Thank you for that. All right, so additionally, per his contract, Mr. Hickey has the ability to earn up to three thousand dollars as a bonus each year at our discretion if his performance exceeds expectation as documented through the performance evaluation process. Per his contract, B, in addition to the above salary, the Town Administrator may receive up to three thousand dollars bonus each year at the board's discretion. Said bonus not to be applied to base salary if the Board of Selectmen in its sole discretion determines that his performance exceeds expectations as documented through the performance evaluation process set forth in section five of this agreement. Said bonus payment is payable in the first pay period in July, based on the evaluation in April of each year. Any comments, questions from the board?
I'm just looking at this from a quantitative evaluation. Um, I mean, he did exceed expectations on a number of categories. So, um, I mean, not all of them, but I'm trying to figure out if it's a majority. So, I don't know, I don't know what people are thinking, but I was just looking at that.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but we can, no, so it, it's up to three thousand dollars.
Correct.
So we can make a motion to pay no bonus, up to three thousand, any, anything in between.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments, questions, or if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize a bonus of three thousand dollars based on the results of the administrator's annual evaluation. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Nay, sorry.
Okay. An abstain? Okay, so it passes three to one to one.
And if anyone wants clarification, Keith, you should, it's just merely quantitative, not qualitative.
All right, uh, moving on to item number two, request from Troop Forty-nine for four camperships. Um, we had received this last month. Correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, but we had the incorrect dollar amount that was provided. Um, so this one, we're gonna need to, to approve with the correct dollar amount. So we received a request from Boy Scout Troop Forty-nine requesting funding for four camperships, which would allow four Boy Scouts the opportunity to attend summer camp. Any, any questions or comments? If not, anyone wanna make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the request from Troop Forty-nine for funding in the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty dollars from the William H. Willis Charity Fund for four camperships for the BSA Summer Camp. The disbursements to be made to Troop Forty-nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. All right, number three, an acceptance that we had a resignation from the Historical Commission and Memorial Day Parade Committee. Um, would someone like to make a motion?
Do you wanna go for it?
Sure. I make a motion to. It's, it's right up here, right?
Yeah, you're good.
Oh my gosh, I don't even have to make it up. I move the Board of Selectmen accept the resignations from David McKee from the Historical Commission and Jean Coleman from the Memorial Day Parade Committee effective immediately.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's four oh oh. All right, acceptance of donation. We have a donation. Stephen Writington from No Fear Landscaping is donating ten cubic yards of black mulch for the town in preparation of the Memorial Day Parade. Would someone like to make that motion?
Sure. You want me to do it? Go on.
Sure. I move the Board of Selectmen accept the donation of ten cubic yards of mulch in estimated value of four hundred dollars from No Fear Landscaping.
No, I just wanna make the board aware. They, they reached out to Mr. Bazler. Uh, they're generously donating the bark mulch to put around the town, the townhouse property in preparation for the Memorial Day celebration. So it'll, it'll be here next Monday and we thank them for that.
Yeah, our plan is if the board accepts the donation, tomorrow morning, we're gonna send two trucks over. 'Cause it's a lot easier to have a chute in the wheelbarrow than our trucks. So we'll start getting these planters and stuff ready for the parade on Monday. It's the first time in, I think, five or six years that we've had the opportunity to replace the mulch, and I think it's a great donation. And while I'm still here, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, I forgot to bring it open forum. Uh, the plan to pave mill and overlay Gallant Road and Marion Drive was supposed to start tomorrow. It has been postponed till Tuesday of next week. So Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, there're gonna be milling operations going on. There will be delays. There is a lot of truck traffic. There was a lot of people going to the commuter rail as well as the other businesses. We beg for your patience during this process, but when we're all done, that road will be smooth again.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, that's as, as the scope of the agenda. I'm just kidding. I've just always wanted to say that.
Thank you.
All right, so you made the motion to.
Yeah, I don't think anybody. Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right. Whoa, we're almost done.
It's exciting.
I said seven though, so you're pretty, you're already late.
Yeah, I know. Okay, uh, we have meeting minutes from March twelfth, twenty twenty-four and May eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the open session meeting minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty-four and May eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Open session meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, four oh one. Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't have any financial updates for you now. I don't have any financial updates for you now. We will be having NDA transfers coming forward to you on June 4th and potentially again on the, on the 18th. I provided the board a letter from Carol McCoy at your places tonight to make you aware that the IT budget and the legal budget are going to be over expended, and it will be going to the FinCon and the Board of Selectmen with part of those transfers to address those, those overages. We talked about the new boat ramp, you know, I had the opportunity and I didn't really want any publicity for it, but it was interesting to get out and help those guys out down there. During my three hours down there, it was apparent to me why Tom Taylor is the harbor master, because I saw him do nothing down there except direct, which was fantastic. But it was, it was a neat opportunity, and I know it's a very close community down at the Idina, and it was nice to be part of that. As everybody saw up front, the construction of the memorial, Veterans Memorial is phenomenal. I want to thank the members of the committee that include Bob Ketter, Dan Forbes, Richard Vino, Jim Gallagher, Dave McKee, Bob King, and Linda Regosta. I also want to thank our, our recreation, excuse me, our veterans agent as well, who's done an amazing job at doing that. And also Paul Armstrong has been kind of coordinating the contractors and construction, thank him for that. The, the area will be cleaned up a bit for Monday. It'll be much more, much safer to walk around than it is now with the uneven dirt piles and loose sod and things of that nature. But we hope, they hope to have that cleaned up and ready to go by sometime in mid-June, and I think it's a tremendous improvement to this campus, so thank them for that. Just to make the board aware, construction on the new wastewater leaching field has begun. The Water Department has gone out to bid and has awarded a bid for the water main operator of Main Street. That improvement will run from Summer Street to the Route 3 South off-ramp, and construction is supposed to start later this spring. Mass DOT notified, notified the town that they'll be working on the Landing Road Bridge under Route 3. The scope of that work is to clean, fully remove all the paint and repaint it. They will mobilize on the 28th of May and work, and work seven to five o'clock until likely into July. One-way alternating traffic on Landing Road will be required. So again, if there's a better way to get there than using Landing Road during the week, we'd suggest that you try to do that. Police details will be out there, but there will be some traffic delays. With the upcoming retirement of the veteran, in the Veterans Office, both Priscilla Brackett and Dan, Dan is retiring as well. The town, we, the town of Kingston through Priscilla, reached out to the town of Ducksbury to see if they'd be willing to share a veterans agent that would provide services for both veteran, for both Kingston and Ducksbury veterans. We met with a veterans agent from Ducksbury two or three times, who was very excited about the opportunity to try that. The, the town of Ducksbury decided yesterday that they would prefer to keep the veterans agents, veterans agents just to themselves and not create a district. So we'll be advertising for the veterans agent, excuse me, this week, and try to fill that position as quickly as we can. And then lastly, Trish has done some due diligence on Fall Town Meeting. We have to have one because of the MBTA zoning that has to be voted on, based on availability of PAC TV or the local scene now, or scene, local scene? That's what it's called?
Local scene.
All right, sorry. The moderator, the schools and whatnot, we're proposing a tentative date of Tuesday evening, November 19th. We know zoning will be on that warrant. There'll also be a couple of other things, but, I expect, but hope to have absolutely no money, money items on that Fall Town Meeting warrant. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has on that or anything else.
And that's the week before Thanksgiving, in case anyone was curious. That is not Thanksgiving week.
I don't think so. I think it's a week early.
I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that, because that was the first thing I looked at.
So we'll put together a schedule for Fall Town Meeting, bring it to the board for your acceptance at some point this spring, summer. I did check with the Superintendent of Schools, so she's aware of that date as well. And once we finalize it, we'll publicize it and work towards putting the other warrant for that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hickey?
Nope.
All right, Selectmen comments. Kim, would you like to say something?
I do, I have a couple things. Hold on, I gotta find my notes.
Jumped on.
No, actually, I wanted to bring up, I got a call, I got a call from the residents about the Ragnar relay race. So apparently, I don't, I wasn't aware of this, but apparently at 4:00 in the morning, they were on the loudspeakers blaring music and welcoming at Ragnar relay race. Remember, they were coming into Silver Lake High School, so the residents on Lake Street were getting blasted music and "Here comes so-and-so running across the finish line" at 4:00 in the morning. So I think we should be aware of that as we think about approving the event for next year, that we should probably make some contingencies about noise.
Yeah.
Because I, I was unaware of that.
I didn't think it ended there. I mean, in years past, that was just a station where the vans pulled in and then other, you know, they, they, it was a relay. So people would jump in the van, people would jump out and do the next leg, but I thought it finished down the cape.
It does finish down the... They changed their route.
Oh, it does.
Yeah. I ran in it before, and maybe that noise that you're talking about could be from the individual vans that transport people to different places.
It's not the way it sounded, but, but either way, I think if...
That's a great...
If they have loudspeakers and microphones and they're shouting and playing loud music, that's just not, that's not what we described to people, that it would not be impacted at 4:00 in the morning, so I wasn't aware of that.
And where was their holding place, Silver Lake High School? Is that what they, the layover was?
Maybe some common sense measures for next year?
Well, and I had suggested you can also call the police because that's a noise violation, but it's a little late now, obviously, so just for next time, maybe we'll just think about putting that in as one of our conditions.
Excellent.
And then the only thing I was going to mention is we had a couple of agenda requests that came up in this meeting. I think Tricia probably grabbed them, but finding consensus if we want liaisons for the community host agreement that we talked about, and then just the affordable housing appointment. I just added those down.
Thank you. Dawn, do you have anything?
I got nothing.
Couple of things. Just wanted to also thank Sheila for serving the board, welcoming me in as a new member and making me feel really welcome early on and showing me the ropes, and I really appreciate her dedication to the town. Missy, welcome, really great to have you. Dawn, thanks for serving as Vice Chair and passing it off to me. Kim, thank you for sharing, referred, for serving as Chair and passing it off to Eric, and you guys did an amazing job in leadership, and thank you so much for that.
I'm just going to apologize in advance, I might call for votes accidentally, so just...
Yeah, just have a noise card.
Just slap me for it.
And then I do have just a quick MBTA zoning task force update. We met on Monday to discuss the MBTA zoning and what's moving forward. And as the plans need to be filed, to stay in compliance with the state's mandates, the plan has to be filed with the state, and so there'll be a joint meeting, I think it's by the end of June, or middle, end of June. So there'll be a joint meeting between the MBTA Task Force and the Planning Board on June 10th. And so that will be the final kind of checking off the boxes to send that plan off to the state for it to be reviewed, to have enough time for it to be reviewed in order to get to Fall Town Meeting. So that'll, if anybody's interested in the MBTA zoning, which I think there's a lot more people that are interested in that than, than they previously have been, especially after spring town meetings, some towns adopting it, some towns rejecting it. There's a lot of eyes on it right now, obviously. There's been a lot of eyes on it for a number of years, but this is, this is, this is it right now, and this is a really big moment for the Commonwealth and for municipalities to, to, to work with the state to find a solution to a mandate that's difficult. And so, but in order to stay in compliance on our Way to Fall Town Meeting, June 10th will be the final meeting for people to be able to come, listen and participate between the MBTA zoning task force and the Planning Board.
Is that what they refer to as paper compliance?
Yes.
Okay. Because I've, I've heard people reference paper compliance. It's like when you're doing the things that you need to do by the deadlines, but you have...
Yeah, there's a certain amount of days, it's like 88 or 90, there's a certain amount of days it has to go, and they have, I think it's 88 actually, that they have to have in, in their hands to then review it, stamp the approval or give feedback. But that also gives us the, it gives us enough time until Fall Town Meeting to then be able to get their feedback, get their stamp on it, and then we can vote yes or no on.
I apologize. Can I jump in real quick?
Absolutely.
So just to try to piggyback on what Tyler mentioned about the MBTA zoning, as the boards are aware, we were, we were, the town of Kingston was invited amongst a number of South Shore communities to attend a meeting tomorrow morning with the governor. The meet, the, the topic of the meeting really wasn't disclosed, but my impression is it's going to have to do, a lot to do with the MBTA zoning and, and potential housing challenges on the South Shore. So our new chairman and I will be attending that, along with Valer Massad. I know she made an offer to the Planning Board Chairman, I'm not sure he's committed one way or another yet, but I do know somebody who may be able to give him a nudge.
See if he's still awake.
Yes. It's in, it's in Kingston, so it's not like it's over the border. So we'll be attending that. I'm hoping that we can ask some questions of the governor about the MBTA zoning and whether or not they're going to potentially litigate against other communities that don't approve the MBTA zoning like they have against one already. And if we have the opportunity to potentially talk about the temporary housing located at the Baymont, we can potentially have that conversation with them as well.
Could we, could we offer the, our, our state delegation a tour?
Yes.
The Baymont.
Yes, be happy to.
And any comments, Missy?
No, thank you.
Eric, something else that is on my list currently is the signing of the weekly warrant. I don't know if that's something we want to vote on at another meeting, to reassign it. I don't know if you want to do it since you have to do the agenda now, so just think about it, and for now, I'll do it, but...
Well, the chair has to do it.
Perfect.
So no vote necessary?
We, we had to vote to do that, though.
You can vote to assign someone in case you weren't unable to, but the chair is the one to decide.
Interesting. So last time we voted, it had to be three signatures until we voted to have me do it.
The chair.
Correct.
It's not you.
Me as the chair.
The chair.
Okay, interesting. Because I did it for Jess, too, when she was the chair. That's fascinating.
So no vote...
Good, okay.
So no vote is required for the chair to do it, but if we want to take a vote now to have an alternate, then we could, we could do so.
Does it have to be an alternate, or can it be alternates? Like, can we just...
One alternate, interesting. Okay. So does that have to be on the agenda to vote it, though?
Yes.
Yeah, so, next time.
And the, the last thing I have is, and I'd ask Mrs. Stevens to confirm this, I've heard that Eversource has started removing poles on Main Street. I have not seen it.
Oh, I'm here, I'm seeing nods. Seeing nods.
Yes, some, some people behind are saying yes. So I went up...
On Main Street, so yes.
Okay, I, I heard that they had started, so I went up Main Street on my way to work this morning, hadn't seen anything, but then I can, it was confirmed this morning with somebody that I spoke to. So I just, I'm, I'm, I think Eversource is starting to understand the issue here in Kingston, and hopefully some of those poles will be removed before the Memorial Day Parade, which is great.
So my final comments, I just want to say thank you to Kimberly and to Dawn for all they've done in the past year, serving as Chair and Vice Chair. I know Tyler and I are looking forward to filling your very big shoes. And I will say thank you for your notes, those notes were amazing. And as clerk, if you want to keep doing the notes, these are phenomenal.
Nice try, buddy.
It was like, number one, do this, number two, ask keep.
No, 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 that's, those are my notes for me, so now you're on your own, buddy. Also, technically, I think your shoes are probably bigger than mine.
Potentially. All right, thank you so much. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
It's not my job, I make a motion to adjourn.